And six hundred sixty-eight thousand fifty-eight dollars thirty-six cents. If I'm not mistaken here. All right. Do we have any discussion about this resolution?
I just want to say, I just got this and I need time to look at it. I mean, are we going to take this through a special call so we can actually go line by line through this? I mean, what are we going to do? Because I don't feel like, I don't feel it's right for us to sit here and pass something that we haven't laid eyes on to even a...
Mr. Chair.
I agree. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, this time I move that we table this. This is a resolution. We did just get this resolution today and that we table this to the next council meeting and that we have time for further review.
Okay. We have a motion to table. Can we get a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to second to table this resolution. Did anyone else have any other comments?
Well, I had one for you. I agree with you all. Just got this just at this time. And I don't, I don't think that's fair to our citizens for me to speed read all this.
Okay. So what we'll do, I'll get with the committee and we can actually schedule a meeting so we can have more, more time to look at this. If we want to do something this week or just whenever, whatever time is good for the committee.
Whatever's good for you. I'll work around my schedule.
All right. Let's see. So what I'll do, I'll get with the clerks, see if we can find a good time for all of us to be present and try to make it at a time where I guess all the other council members can be present as well because this is affecting the 2025 budget. And so I will try to, yes, we can try to do it this week. Let's try to go ahead and at least we can nail down a day of time right now. Let's try to do, trying to see will be a good day.
Will a noon be good?
Is a noon good for people or do we need a different time?
Noon is fine for me.
At noon, we can maybe do, because I'll be here already for Wednesday for another committee meeting, so that'll give me an hour and a half to do this and then...
Wednesday?
Wednesday?
Yeah, perfect.
Wednesday at noon?
Yeah. So Wednesday at noon?
Wednesday at noon. We can meet in the old council chambers?
Okay.
Okay? Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
I think I had something at noon around that time. You saying Wednesday, Thursday?
Wednesday?
Okay. And we have the Zoom meeting too, so that...
I tried, I tried.
And we have Zoom available as well?
Okay.
Okay. All right. So it's Wednesday at noon, okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll, we'll have a meeting, another Ways and Means meeting at Wednesday at noon to, so we can discuss this resolution. Okay? Any other discussion?
No.
All right. Hearing none, I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Ways and Means is adjourned.
Ordinance and resolutions, it is five oh six. It is Monday, April the seventh. We have nine agenda items. Number one is the ordinance is up for the, up for its third and final reading. Number two is the ordinance up for its first reading. Number three is the ordinance up for its first reading. Number four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine are all resolutions and they will all be completed on tonight. Are there any questions regarding ordinances and resolutions?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to know if these two new ordinances went through a committee because I know we usually take the ordinances through the committees before it's actually on the agenda. And so I know we don't have to do that for resolutions. So I'm just asking if these have gone through committee.
Which one, council member?
Second and third one. Number two and number three.
Two and three.
That's up for the first reading.
Two took, 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 took Ways and Means last time.
Number two, number two went through Ways and Means, Ways and Means at the last council meeting. Number three...
Okay. And the, and the third one?
Three went through developing and planning, planning and development.
Yeah. It should have, it should have went through development, planning. Is, is Keisha here? But usually, well, wait a minute. Wait. On the agenda, did number three go through the meeting? It's, it's, it's a, it's a closure of an alley.
Yes.
So number two and three have both been through committees?
Okay.
Does that answer all questions?
Yes.
All right. Is there any further discussion for ordinance and resolutions?
I'd have one, one question. On number two, on electronic payments, I was wondering would it be possible for that one to be, the issue I have with that one, it doesn't have the procedures, but it says that the procedures will be developed. I just believe it'd be better to have the procedures to be part of the ordinance, Madam Chair, that, that way we wouldn't have to come back and amend the ordinance to add the policy.
Well, I think that the, the reason that we set it up for the, the procedures to be defined is because it's kind of a moving target, given that we are going through this process from New World to Tyler Technologies. And essentially, what we want to do is give the authority and the policies and procedures would be determined by the people who are going to be operating it based upon technology or based upon, you know, what it looks like for one agency to the next. So, I mean, really, it just was about ease and it just made sense to not get too in the weeds when all we're trying to do. And, and really, we also looked at the, the model of, I know the, the state in terms of making sure that the authority is there to do it, but then setting up the, the rules and procedures based upon the people who would be using it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And one of my, that is, well, one of my concerns is that we are going through, we just passed Tyler Technology ordinance and we're going through that whole process. And I just think that it's better for us to finish that, that process before we start thinking about doing anything electronic to make sure that it fits with whatever is going to be put into Tyler Tech, put in by Tyler Technologies for each department. Because it'll, it'll, it's almost like we would be defeating, if we jump and do this now and then we get Tyler Technology in and then we find out there's some hiccups and then we have to go back and fix everything else. I think we just need to have that done first.
Well, let me say this. We're in the 21st century and we use technology to receive money. And I just don't think it's a stretch for us to use technology to pay our bills so that we don't get dinged like we did by paying bills late because we can't pay them electronically. So if we use technology in all other fiscal processes, it makes no sense to me to wait for a year when we could pay electronically now with all of the professionals involved in the process of setting up the procedures, which could easily be changed once we have the Tyler Technologies transition in place or as it changes. So I'm proposing this to give the authority to the people who actually engage in the financial processes to pay our bills. And, and I think that obviously whatever procedures are done would be done based on the professionals who would be using them. And I mean, that's, that's how I'm trying to get it done. I just, I don't think we need to wait a year when we're living in the 21st century and everybody has a phone and a computer on their desk or in their hand.
And I do understand that. I agree that we need to have it electronically. I'm just saying in reference, from, from me working in the office and having to pay bills, I know that there's always a check, checking balance. And we, we want to have the transparency. We want to make sure that everything is being done decent and in order. And so when we would pay bills, we always made sure that finance laid eyes on it, the mayor's office laid eyes on it, and then it went to the clerk's office for her approval and for her to cut the check. So I'm just making sure that if we decide to do this, that we will have those checks and balances in place because right now you're saying we're going to go, we're going to create the policy or procedure as we go along.
No, that's not what I said.
Okay, then...
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is we give the authority to the professionals and, and the checks and balances wouldn't change, which is why the clerk and the finance director and the treasurer would be involved in setting the processes and, and the procedures as it's done now. This is just a matter of us going from paper to using technology so that we can do things quickly and in your words, decent and in order. And I, I think that as it relates to, and I don't want to belabor this, but as it relates to the concerns, the bottom line is I, I trust our clerk and our treasurer and our director of finance to set the procedures in place so that we can maintain the, the safeguards that we have. And this would not change that. This would be a matter of basically saying, instead of writing a check, you can use the technology. And I, and I just would ask for you all to consider that as it is. And, you know, if, if the will of the council is to do something else, I'll respect that.
Madam, Madam Mayor, Mr. Chairman, I don't know who's chairing this meeting. Mr. Hocken. Oh, Mr. Bro.
No, Hocken. It's ordinance and, ordinance and resolutions.
Am I free to ask a question?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. I was going to wait until we went to the third reading of this to ask my questions, but I do, since it was brought up. I do commend you all for initiating this legislation. I did just have a few questions. Number one, I was confused as to what we mean by electronic payment. So is this like authorizing city employees to use like a credit card or a debit card or something?
No. So the same way that if you make a payment online from an account or, and again, I don't, I don't even want to give an example because there are different ways to do it and the, those who have been identified to determine what the, the procedures are would determine that. So it may be that the, you know, that the invoice is sent electronically from a department or to the mayor's office and then go to the Department of Finance. Then it may be that it goes for approval or some sort of sign off electronically to the clerk's office and then go back for it to go through. I, I don't know how it would go, but that would be the processes and procedures to determine how it would be done in keeping with, you know, the, the checks and balances. The bottom line is what now might take three days or a week could be, could, could take a day or less. And that's the point.
Okay. And I do agree with that. I do know we've been hearing from citizens who say that, you know, they want an easier process and I know employees want that as well. I think if this is coming before the council for a vote, I would like a little bit more details because I'm still struggling to kind of grasp what this, what the current process is and what process this one is creating. So I don't know if the solution would be to pull this until we have that or just ensure that we have that outlined by our third reading.
I would, let me, let me say this. I would ask that since there is a process in place for you all to consider these measures, I mean, I think that's what the reading process is for. And so if we go through three readings and there is more information that's requested, I think that as we have a process, that information can be requested and at the end of the day...
Yeah, that's basically what I'm requesting. If by that third re, if we're not going to pull it if by that third reading, could all those parties have gotten together and present that to...
Absolutely. I'd be happy to make sure that that's drawn out for you and answer any questions.
Yeah, that would help.
So you can make informed decisions.
Okay.
Yeah.
And for the record, it is up for the first reading?
Yes. Thank you.
No further questions. That concludes...
So, so who's going to follow up on the payments when it starts coming out?
We will answer all questions so that you can, let, let us get your questions and get those who would be involved in providing that information so that when you make, upon the third reading, when you make the determination, you will have that information. Because I, I can't answer that question right now. Thank you.
Okay. There's no further discussion. That concludes ordinance and resolutions.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. So move.
Recording stopped.
Few minutes. They don't have a time.
And so right now, we will, before we start officially, we will engage the swearing in for our police, interim police chief.
Shirley Warrior.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
Interim Chief of Police.
Interim Chief of Police.
Of the City of Pinebluff, Arkansas.
Of the City of Pinebluff, Arkansas.
Police Department.
Pinebluff Police Department.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and of the state of Arkansas.
Of the United States and the state of Arkansas.
The laws and ordinances.
The laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Pinebluff, Arkansas.
Of the City of Pinebluff, Arkansas.
The regulations, policies, and procedures.
The regulations, policies, and procedures.
Of the Pineville Police Department.
Of the Pineville Police Department.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It is my pleasure to present this oath of office. So take a bit for you, to you chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Compton and his family?
Ready? You will repeat after me. Is everybody in place? Right hand? Aye. Say your name.
Randy Compton.
Having been appointed interim chief of fire department.
Having been appointed interim chief of fire department.
Of the City of Pinebluff, Arkansas.
Of the City of Pinebluff, Arkansas.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Arkansas.
Of the United States and the state of Arkansas.
The laws and ordinances.
The laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Pinebluff, Arkansas.
Of Pinebluff, Arkansas.
The regulations, policies, and procedures.
The regulations, policies, and procedures.
Of the Pinebluff Fire Department.
Of the Pinebluff Fire Department.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And Chief Compton, it is my pleasure to present to you this certificate of your oath of office and thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
I mean, I changed it so it would be easier to deal with today. Yeah, I think it probably would not, I guess it's not enough time for it. So Wednesday will be...
Wednesday, what time?
You bring the lunch? I have a New York strip. With New York strip on top? Make the announcement so everybody will know. So we're going to have lunch at our 12 o'clock meeting on Wednesday.
We have lunch?
The clerk says she was providing lunch.
Who?
Clerk.
What?
The clerk.
What did he say?
I, I want to say we were... You were providing lunch.
Some lettuce.
She said lettuce. So she said she could have a salad. We're going to have some protein with salad. No protein, she said. That's okay. I'll bring, I'll bring something. I'm going to be, I'll probably be at the 12 to 3 because I have my, I have my public session meeting right after this. Well, this may not take long. I think 30 minutes. I think it'll be quick.
What we did initially is put that money in general fund, under the policies of Congress so that we could put it someplace and...
Uh, okay. So it's not a dispendable right now.
That's what I was telling you. I changed it to...
Okay. I didn't know. I'll have it.
I know.
Yeah.
And I didn't get a chance to send out the explanations for that.
Okay. Okay. I think it happened, I think everybody had it. They were like, yeah. They saw that one and then they saw this one and it was like...
I just feel so kind of way that I'm operating first time. Being the first quarter, first place.
We're going to, we're going to find out, okay, this person here. You know, it's a little different.
So we'll start. I got it. I just thought I was...
All right, everybody. We are about to get started. Before we go into the formal city council meeting, I believe that the fire department had a presentation that they wanted to make this meeting. I don't know who is here to make that presentation. Chief Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
The Pinebluff Fire and Emergency Services presents this life-saving award to Kianta Washington for your swift and courageous acts at Piney Wood Apartments on March 11th...
Chief Jones? I'm sorry. If I could ask Chief Howell to join you because I think his, he arrived and I know you were...
Right.
I just knew you, I, I saw that he was in the back.
Piney Woods Apartments on March 11th, 2025, are putting yourself in harm's way that day, Captain's lives were saved. And we make this presentation to Mr. Kianta Washington and Mr. Cortez Shaw.
Okay. Yes, you all come up on stage so you can get your picture done properly. Okay, yes, you all come up on stage so you can get your picture done properly. So Mr. Shaw, Mr. Washington had an opportunity to be recognized by the council before and the fire department wanted to, they had already started their process, so. Oh, okay. And I believe we just had one person who came by to get on the list to make public comments on. Oh, no, that'll be toward the end for non-agenda items, Mr. Lever? For non-agenda items, correct? Okay, so then we will get started and call the meeting to order officially and ask for Pastor Lewis Henkel of Summit Baptist Church to lead us in an invocation.
Madam Mayor and honorable council members, I want to commend you and thank you for allowing prayer to be a part of your civil proceedings. We do want the blessings of the Lord on our city and on our surrounding county and state. Let's pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for giving us this day. I pray your blessing upon this council, upon this mayor, upon these new appointed chiefs. Lord bless their leadership, guide them, give them wisdom, give them understanding. And Father, just continue to provide for us. Thank you for seeing us through the storm, even though it was bad this week. And I just pray that, God, you would just pour your blessing upon these dear people who serve our great city. And we ask it all in the name of Jesus and for his sake, amen.
Amen.
And now we will have Erin Linwood of Friendship Academy lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Linwood. I attend Bishop Aspire Academy downtown and I'm in the third grade. Can we all stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public. We're just stairs, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You made the city.
Thank you so much, Erin Linwood. Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, if you'll please take the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Here.
Councilmember Brown Jr.?
Here.
Councilmember Lockett? Councilmember Frazier?
Here.
Councilmember Brunson?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
And Councilmember Fells?
Here.
A present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the March 17th meeting. It has been moved and seconded.
In progress.
It has been moved and seconded that the minutes from March 17th be approved. All those indicate approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Motion approved. And now we will move on to committee reporting. Ways and Means. Why do I do this every time? That is total, no, that is Brown Jr. Councilmember Brown, please deliver us our report.
Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Means, mad, just before this council meeting, we had one item before us. It was a resolution amendment to 2025 municipal budget. Adopted in, adopted in Resolution Number 4849. This resolution was tabled and it's gonna be, we're gonna talk about it in committee meeting and that's gonna be on Wednesday, April the 9th at noon in the old council chambers. And so we'll be able to go through this resolution more thoroughly. And that concludes Ways and Means.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please report to us on ordinances and resolutions?
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda item number one is up for the third and final reading. Agenda items number two and three is up for the first reading. Agenda items four, five, six, seven, eight, nine are all resolutions and they will be completed on tonight. That gives us nine agenda items. That concludes ordinance and resolutions.
Thank you, Chairman Holcomb. And Councilmember Frazier, will you please report on economic and community development?
No report for economic and community development. However, we will have a meeting next Thursday if it's available for the clerk at 11:00 a.m.
We will check.
Okay.
Next, next?
Yeah, 11:00 a.m. She's gonna check and.
Okay, so that concludes your report?
Yes, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Denton, Chair of Public Health and Welfare, please report.
Mayor, we did not meet because of the weather storm, but we will meet on the first Thursday of next month.
You'll meet on the first Thursday of next month? And do we have a time yet?
Four o'clock.
At 4:00 p.m.?
In the old chambers.
In the old city council chambers? Thank you very much. Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Lockett, will you please report on public works?
Madam Mayor, the Public Works Committee has not met since our last meeting, but I'm still looking through our project list and we will be having a meeting soon, as soon as we, excuse me. We're working on projects that we plan to execute this year. So I'll give it to clerk and announce a meeting.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Fells, will you please report on development and planning?
So our committee has several items before the council tonight. They are satisfaction and release requests. These were liens that were placed on, it looks like, five properties. The property owners have paid what they need to pay to get those liens released. And so now we just need to vote on it. Attorney Scott can let me know if I'm doing this wrong, but I would make a motion that we release the liens off these properties.
You can do them all at once.
You can do them all at once.
Okay, I motion every release the liens on all, each of these properties because the owners have paid the satisfying cost.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that all five satisfaction and release liens be released. I don't know if I just said that right, but y'all understand what I'm saying. All those wishing to vote for indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brunson, will you please report on traffic and aviation?
Thanks, Mayor. Traffic and aviation has not met since our last council meeting, but I will give it to clerk for a time next week and she'll sit it out to everyone to inform them of the time and the date of that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holcomb Jr., will you please report on administration?
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee will meet next Tuesday, April the 15th, at 3:00 p.m. If that is good for my committee members.
Next Tuesday? Tomorrow?
No, next Tuesday.
April 15th.
At 3:00 p.m. Councilmember Brown?
Uh, that should be fine. I may, I may be on zone, but.
Councilmember Brown?
3:00.
So 3:00 Tuesday, April 15th will be your next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Brown, will you please report on public safety?
Thank you, Mayor. Public safety will meet on Wednesday, April 9th, at 1:30 in the old council chambers. And so that's the day after tomorrow. And that concludes my report.
April 9th at 1:30, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that concludes the committee reports. And now Councilman Holcomb, if you will lead us into the proposed ordinances and resolutions.
Agenda item number one, an ordinance amending subsection B in section 26-113 of Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting prohibited driving acts and for related purposes, up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending subsection B in section 26-113 of Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting prohibited driving acts and for related purposes.
Move for adoption?
Second.
I'm sorry, it's been moved and seconded that the, the ordinance number one be adopted. All those indicate by, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Good evening. I sponsored this because, good evening, everybody. I sponsored this because every, every ward is, on the ward that's getting that's getting the people, young people to come in there and drag race is the fourth ward. The rest of y'all might have it too, but a lady called me, was terrified because they do it at 3:00 in the morning and what they do, they drag race for money in the city of Pine Bluff. It's quiet, everybody, if you up, you can hear it. And we have to do something. I get calls all the time. I've been waiting, pulling this off for a while and I got the third and final reading on this because I want you all to see this. If you don't, get up, wake up early in the morning and come out and then look and hear it. The people, the lady, a lady in my ward called, we're just crying. She couldn't even sleep. And I know y'all can hear this all over the town, it's quiet at night. And they wake up and meet somewhere, meet mostly in the fourth ward and just start racing, drag racing, burning rubber. And then one, and then they, move the money around and then they go, but they come back two or three days later. They just come do it. And if you all haven't heard it, get up early.
Any further questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Fells?
First of all, I do want to commend Councilmember Mays for introducing this legislation. I think that drag racing is an issue in all of our wards and we have heard from concerned citizens. I actually did get a call from a resident about this piece of legislation and they were actually asking about the fines that we put in this ordinance. And I see that, for example, the first conviction is 300, the second conviction is 500, and then the third is 1,000. And the point that they were making is that, you know, these people invest a lot of money into their vehicles. And so they were just a little questioning whether or not these fines would be steep enough. So I don't know if you're comfortable with just passing the legislation as is or if you would be open to some higher fines? Or how did you come up with these numbers here?
I just feel like this will stop them. This will slow them down a whole lot. Now, they probably keep doing it because they're so disobedient. And if you want to raise it and increase it, I'm all for it. But let's start here first. We always come back and amend to it. But something needs to be done immediately.
I have a question as well.
Councilmember Brown?
Councilmember Fells?
Yes, ma'am.
It can't, it won't, the fine cannot exceed the $1,000.
Okay.
Can't exceed the $1,000.
So this is the most we can do, okay.
And what we'll do, we'll bring them up, we'll come back, we'll add, make it go up to 1,000.
Well, I just wanted to ask this. So right now, if you have a ticket for something similar to this, then what would be that, where would that fine start off at? For, I guess it would be reckless driving?
I don't have the chart in front of me, but I think reckless driving is like 365.
So this would be less than that?
It depends on how the officer cites them when they're, when they're issued their citation. So if they cite them for reckless driving, that'd be one thing, but if they cite them for violation of this ordinance, then it would be the $300. And those resources would go directly to the city versus having to split it up with the state.
Attorney Hayden Scott, just real quick, just to piggyback off of Councilmember Brown's question, would there be anything to prohibit the law, the ticketing officer from charging for both? Because there are two different, you know, reckless driving and then, because that's one thing, but also being cited for drag racing would be something else. Would there be anything to prohibit the ticketing officer from citing someone for both?
As long as they don't, they overlap, but I think that there are some, there is a distinction between the, just the reckless driving and the drag racing. So I believe that they can be charged for both offenses.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Without further discussion, it's been moved and seconded. All those in agreeance with this ordinance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's been passed. Congratulations, Councilwoman Mays.
Thank you all.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Agenda item number two, an ordinance amending section 2-141 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to authorize municipal government to make electronic payments and for related purposes, up for the first reading.
Whereas the relentless advance of technology has resulted in many vendors or other entities requiring payment in electronic form. And whereas, in order to continue to do business with these vendors or entities, it is necessary for municipal government to be authorized to pay them in a form which they will accept. And whereas, ACA Section 1459105E authorizes a municipality to make electronic payments when authorized by ordinance passed by the governing body and pursuant to the policies and procedures compliant with state law and regulations. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council, the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, section 2-141 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended as follows. Designate the current section as subsection A and add a new subsection B to provide. The departments, agencies, boards and commissions of the City of Pine Bluff are authorized to make payment for goods and services to a vendor or other entity in electronic form pursuant to a policy and procedures adopted by the city pertaining to said payments and consistent with the requirements of Arkansas law. Section 2, the city treasurer, city clerk and finance director are directed to craft their required policy and procedures for making electronic payments and to ensure that the state and local rules regarding record keeping and record retention are kept. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 4, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk will ensure it to be published in compliance with Arkansas law. Section 5, the ordinance takes effect on the 31st day after its approval.
Place it on the calendar. Agenda item number 3.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I just had a, I guess I just wanted to say that I'm, based on our previous discussion, if any member of the council has any specific question, broad question, request for information, I would ask that you just shoot me an email or call me and we'll document it. If I'm not available for whatever reason, then you can contact Chief of Staff Joyce Campbell and we'll make sure to get you the information you need between now and the third reading. Thank you.
Agenda item number 3, an ordinance to close a portion of the East West Alley located in the 1300 block, East Harding, between Pennsylvania and Ohio Street, up for the first reading.
Whereas, a petition was duly filed with the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to close the east 120 feet of the East West Alley located in the 1300 block of East Harding, between Pennsylvania and Ohio Streets. And whereas, after proper notice as required by law, the city has heard all persons desiring to be heard on the question and has ascertained that the east 120 feet of the East West Alley located in the 1300 block of East Harding, between Pennsylvania and Ohio Streets and, and has here to fore been dedicated to the public use as a public alley and that the public interest and welfare would not be adversely affected by the closing of said alley. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council, the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas hereby releases, vacates and abandons all its rights, together with the rights of the public generally, except those specifically set forth below in and to the portion of the. set forth below in and to the portion of the alley right of way designated as follows. As, section 2, the City of Pine Bluff hereby specifically retains the rights to use the alley as a utility easement. Section 3, a copy of the ordinance is duly certified by the city clerk, shall be filed with the office of the recorder of Jefferson County and recorded in the deed of records of the county. Section 4, that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to such conflict.
Place it on the calendar.
I have a question real quick. While we have Ms. Hill here and I see her back there, I just wanted to make sure that there was no opposition from anyone for this. Alley closing?
Oh, you're talking to me? I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I said there was no opposition or anything for this.
Okay, thank you. Place it on the calendar. Agenda item number 4, a resolution, amending resolution number 4817 to correct the name and location for a property east of 915 East Harding.
Whereas the name and location needs to be corrected with respect to a property listed in resolution number 4817, passed September 16, 2024, titled, "A Resolution Providing for Placement of Cost of Correcting Certain Nuisances on Tax Books as Delinquent Taxes and Collected as Such." Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that resolution number 4817 passed September 16, 2024, is amended as follows. Respecting properties described under the name Veronica Burnett Manley et al., with location 120 West 42nd Avenue, which is found on page four of resolution number 4817, should reflect the following change. Change the name on line four from Burnett Veronica Manley et al. to read GW Coffey. B, change the location on line five from 120 East 42nd Avenue to read east of 915 East Harding. The Code Enforcement Department will cause this resolution to be filed in the deed and lien records of Jefferson County, Arkansas, and mail a copy to the last known address of the property owner.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So was the property sold, or did something happen?
Councilmember Fels, did you hear the question?
So from, so from my understanding, that's not the information that I was given during the committee meeting. My understanding is that this was just an error in the original document, as well as the second document, that we're about to consider an exigent item, and they just needed to correct those.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It was a clerical error.
Gotcha, all right.
Okay. And I'll just go ahead and announce that Councilmember Holcomb had to leave, and Councilmember Lockett, you will resume.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, as Chair.
Okay. We still on ordinance number?
Number four.
Number four.
We need a motion to adopt it.
No, move for adoption.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? There's no further discussion? Here it is.
You started going. No further discussion? No further discussion, so it's been moved and seconded that we will adopt this resolution. All those in agreeance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's been passed.
Right, moving right along, item number five, a resolution amending resolution number 4739 to remove a property east of the 5,001 West Sixth Avenue.
Whereas the property referenced below was included in resolution number 4817. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that resolution number 4817 passed September 16 is amended as follows. On page five, delete lines 13 through 15 to remove reference to property with a street address of east of 5,001 West Sixth Avenue, parcel number 93022028. The Code Enforcement Department will take steps to file this resolution with the Jefferson County deed recorder.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? No discussion? All those in agreeance or to approve this resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve this resolution has been passed.
Item number six, let's see. Resolution authorizing the man and chief of the fire and emergency services department to execute a software as service end user license agreement with Alpine Software Incorporated waiving the requirement of three telephone quotations in acquiring the service.
Whereas the National Emergency Response Information System is replacing the National Fire Incident Reporting System as the primary incident reporting system for the U.S. Fire Departments with a full transition scheduled for January 1, 2026. And whereas the Pine Bluff Fire and Emergency Services Department currently uses the emergency reporting database, which is not compliant with NERIS. And whereas, the department has investigated replacement databases, and after due diligence has identified the database Red NMX, which is offered by Alpine Software Incorporated as compliant with NERIS, which may be leased for the sum of $9,000. And whereas, local procurement regulations require that three telephone quotations be solicited when the service is declared, desired is more than $5,000 but less than $20,000, but the department has been unable to obtain three written quotes. And whereas, obtaining a compliant database is essential to the public safety and welfare, and the local requirement of three telephone quotes should be waived to permit acquisition of the system and a period of training and similarity before the full transition date. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the local requirement of three telephone quotations to replace the database used by the Fire and Emergency Services Department with a new database, which is compliant with federal requirements, is waived. Section 2, that the mayor and the chief of the Fire and Emergency Services Department are authorized to execute the attached five-page software as a service end user license agreement with three-page exhibit A with Alpine Software Incorporated for the software materials and services described in the agreement and exhibit A. Section 3, the consideration for the agreement is $9,000 payable from the department's budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for adoption of resolution number six, any discussion? No discussion? All those in agreeance to approve this resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution's been passed.
Item number seven, a resolution appoint Travis Mosler to the Civic Auditorium Complex Commission.
Whereas the vacancy exists on the Civic Auditorium Complex Commission, and whereas the mayor has appointed Travis Mosler to fill the vacancy subject to council approval. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointment of Travis Mosler to the Civic Auditorium Complex Commission to serve a term to expire March 31, 2032, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number seven, any discussion? No discussion? All those in agreeance with passing resolution number seven indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number seven has been passed.
Right, item eight, a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to utilize federal and transportation alternative program funds downtown Pine Bluff, delta rhythm values, district pedestrian connection phase one.
Whereas the City Council understands that federal aid transportation alternative funds are available at 80% federal participation and 20% local match in kind and labor to improve pedestrian infrastructure along second and third avenues in downtown Pine Bluff. And whereas, the City of Pine Bluff understands that the federal aid funds are available for this project on a reimbursable basis, requiring work to be accomplished and proof of payment prior to actual monetary reimbursement. And whereas, this project using federal funding will be open and available for use by the general public and maintained by applicant for the life of the project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City of Pine Bluff will participate in accordance with its designated responsibility, including maintenance of this project. Section 2, the mayor of the city is hereby authorized and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of the above stated project. Section 3, the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff pledges its full support and hereby authorizes the mayor to cooperate with the Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate the action in implementing this project. Implement.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, resolution number eight, he passed. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in agreeance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution rate has been passed.
Item number nine, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing an agreement with Forvis LLP for auditing services.
Whereas the city has for many years utilized BKD LLP for professional auditing services. And whereas BKD LLP is now part of Forvis LLP, and the city desires to utilize the new firm to continue audit services based on the familiarity and experience with the city of the former BKD auditors who are now part of Forvis. And whereas, competitive bidding for these services cannot secure comparable familiarity and expertise at an equal or better price, engaging in competitive bidding would be inefficient and impractical. And whereas, Arkansas Code Section 1458303B2B permits a municipality by resolution to waive competitive bidding when doing so would not be feasible or practical. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the City Council finds that in light of the foregoing competitive, in light of the foregoing competitive bidding to secure auditing services for the city would be impractical and not feasible. Section 2, the mayor's authorized to execute a contract with Forvis LLP for professional auditing services for the city in substantial conformity with the attached document consisting of 11 pages and for the consideration upon the terms and conditions set therein, conditions therein set forth.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, resolution number nine be adopted, any discussion? All those in agreeing with adopt? I'm sorry, Councilmember Fels?
I do have a couple of questions. I looked in the summary, scope of services, just for general information, are they just auditing?
These are, these are, these are, this is for the audit for federal dollars, and we need to be in compliance. We are behind. 2021 has been done, we have a certain period of time in which we have to complete the audit for 2022 and 2023. And in order to renew the contract, which we already had with them to do this work, we needed to get the approval of the council.
So once they do this, they will come back for the contract for those additional years? How does that work?
I suspect so, because right now, they're, yeah, I mean, I don't know. Because as it was explained, or as it wasn't explained to me initially, I didn't know that we had to come back. And then, in order to be in compliance, and I guess I would ask, Madam Clerk, do, once this work is done to complete '22 and '23, will we need to do a new contract for 2024? Even though and if they already do work business with the city as a sole source? Okay, so yes.
Okay, and then my two additional questions, is it typical for us to be so far behind? Or I'm just wondering why?
My understanding is no. And if I can get Finance Director to give us official, so when I visited with her about it after talking with the auditor, I believe that because there was such a backlog, I guess during COVID, and then, can you go ahead and come up and tell us, so I don't mess it up?
Yes, we did fall behind during COVID, and then the Treasury came out with the American Rescue Plan, which required a lot of smaller cities that had never had to have an audit like this before, to have one because they received those federal dollars, and there are limited accounting firms that perform these services, and so, everybody got behind. And we were catching up.
So this is just a contract to audit the federal dollars from 2022?
Yes, all federal money, transit, community development, the ARP money, anything like that.
Okay.
We're required to do it every year.
And then I know the legislative auditors, they do the whole city budget, so do we just contract out for federal contracts?
Yes, this is required in addition to our other annual audit.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yes. So what's the total cost of this right now, to get this done?
It will depend on how many hours they spend working on it. They bill us during the process for hours as they go, so we won't know the complete balance of what it costs until they're finished.
So what is it, they, they are charged cost per hour?
It depends on which programs they choose to audit, because some require more than others. Typically, we spend anywhere between $7,500 and $25,000.
So, so you're saying $7,500 to $25,000? So what have we been paying for that?
I would have to look and see what we've paid, you know, recently, but like I said, it varies from year to year.
And the bottom line is, in order for us to be in compliance, we have to get it done. They're, they are the ones who've been doing it, so this isn't new. We just had to renew the contract. Any further discussion? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number nine, thank you. All those in agreeance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution's been adopted. Thank you, Councilmember Lockett.
You're welcome, Mayor.
And now, we will share quite a few announcements. The first announcement, University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff Theater Program and the Arts and Science Center of Southeast Arkansas proudly present The Color Purple, the musical. This will be the first main stage UAPB production since 2018, with an opening night on April 9, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in Pine Bluff. Performances are April 9 through the 12 at 7:00 p.m., April 12 at 2:00 p.m., and April 13 at 3:00 p.m. at the Arts and Science Center. Item number two, the Emergency Ambulance Service, Inc., EASI, is proud to partner with Foster's Towing and Midtown Tire and Auto to show their gratitude to first responders. First responders and city officials are invited for a free meal on Thursday, April 17, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at EASI's headquarters located at 514 West Fifth Avenue, Pine Bluff, Arkansas, 71601, as EASI celebrates and honors those who selflessly serve our community. The third announcement, join us for exciting line dancing classes every Monday at the Chester Heinz Community Center from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., hosted by Pine Bluff Parks and Recreation. Whether you're new to dancing or a seasoned Whether you're new to dancing or a seasoned pro, everyone is welcome to get moving and have fun. For more details, call Parks and Recreation at 870-536-0920. Announcement number four, hop into the fun at Pine Bluff Animal Control's Second Annual Adoptable Dog Easter Parade. Enjoy a day full of exciting activities, including egg dyeing, a charming dog parade, and so, so much more. Bring the whole family to celebrate and meet adorable, adoptable dogs looking for their forever homes. This event will take place on April 12, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Pine Bluff Animal Control located at 901 North Haverdy Street. Best of all, it's free to attend. And then finally, join interim chancellor Dr. Andrea Stewart for an elegant evening to benefit UAPB scholarships on Saturday, April 26, at the UAPB STEM Conference Center at 1500 L.A. Prexy Davis Drive, Pine Bluff, Arkansas. The attire is semi-formal, and the cost is $100 per person. For additional information, payment options, or sponsorship opportunities, call 870-575-8701. And for really real, finally, the Pine Bluff AI Summit, Grow Your Business with AI, the Arts and Science Center, 701 South Main, Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And it'll take place on May 15 from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And that will feature speakers David Haley, CEO and founder of Countify, Inc., Don Ward, CEO and founder of Landris Corporation, Jacob Michaelis, founder of Oxygen, Karen Kilroy, founder of NYX No Code, Ogena Carr, CEO of Epiphany Consulting, and Chris Thompson, CEO of Sober Sidekick. And this is the flyer. And that is all of our announcements. And I will, without objection, adjourn, and we will hear public comments on non-agenda items.
Motion for your adjourn.
Oh, okay. I said with no objections, but go ahead. Would you would like to make a full motion?
We'll go ahead and entertain it, go ahead.
I'll entertain.
Second.
Okay, it's been motion and seconded with no objections. We are adjourned. And we will hear from Mr. Julius Lever on the, a public comment on non-agenda items.
City Council and fellow residents, I'm going to read something that's dated July 8, 2005. Hopefully within two minutes, and then I will express some thoughts and any more than asking the persons. This is a letter from Danny Birdstone, the zoning administrator, to Bill Glover, the director, inspector, and zoning department. Here's what it says, 1702 Main Street. That's behind the sunbeam blade, not across the street, the large property. When Julius Lever first came into our office, he stated he wanted to move a modular office to 1702 Main Street to operate business for sale and rental of vehicles and rental of tuxedos. Asked him if the vehicles would be operable, and he stated they would be. He stated that the structure was used as an office and showed me pictures of the structure. Later on, it says, this structure was moved, this is from Danny Birdstone, the zoning administrator. This structure was moved from 5824 Highway 65 South, which was purchased from Perry and Francis Stratton. I spoke with Mrs. Stratton, who was a farmer and all-timer. He said they special ordered the structure for an office and conference room for their cotton gin. He stated it did have a bedroom because during the harvest and processing, someone usually had to be there day and night. Basically, I'm telling you, in 2005, I had a building moved. $40,000 building, $5,000 to have it moved. In 2005, it was stated by no one here today on the city council. The only person who was here then is Mr. Joe Childress. He's the common denominator in all of this. The building was sat there for four years. I was unable to rent the cars that I had. I had three Lexus LS400s, three Infinities. I had Cadillac Sedan DeVille, a Cadillac Coupe DeVille, a Lincoln Town Car, a Lincoln Continental, seven, eight Toyota Camry, seven, eight Honda Cords, and about 1,200 Civics and Maximas. Were not able to rent it from that location for four years, and then the building was literally taken. I went down one day, the building was gone. Never had a hearing in court, never had a jury trial in court. I am suggesting to you, for 20 years, I've been suffering. And 10 times or less, six, eight, for sure, I've come before the city council, and no one has even addressed it. As much as we want the city to prosper, prosper, and as much as we might, some say, need more taxes, I believe sincerely that I would be betraying the trust and the love I have of the city if I did not remind you that many people know about this. They've been watching it the whole time. Here is a paper where the Arkansas Gazette came and put it on the front page of the Arkansas part of the Carroll Office Third Spire Zone. If I have a picture there, tell the whole story. And an alderman, Bill Brummett, was seen leaving out of a similar building that Mr. Mauser had using as a tax office by Church's Chicken, and he had it there. According to Brummett, the Gazette wrote it down, five to six years, and never got no approval to put it there. Whereas I was told, pay $50, we'll go look at it. In three days, we'll give you permission. I did just what I was told to do, and the building was literally taken from me. And today, I stand here as a homeless man because the landlord that I'm renting from noticed on the door saying, you no longer, if you are the renter or if you are the owner of this property, if you're the son of the owner, if you're the daughter of the owner, if you're the spouse of the owner, you no longer own this property. This property was sold December 24 at the Jefferson County Courthouse. And the landlord was told she would get help from the pandemic money, but she never got a penny. She went to the mayor's office. I went in 40 times, each time, get some help. Nobody got some help. So I stand as a homeless man, and the building that I could be using for my home and my business been gone for 20 years. And no one on the city council and no mayor has even addressed the issue. And I'm just suggesting to you, young people stop. And they say to me, have they paid you yet? People are not going to vote for a tax again until they see some of these wrongs addressed. That is only my opinion, and I could be wrong. But 20 years, my building been gone. $40,000 building, $5,000 to have it moved, and it's taken? And where is it today? I don't know. And the man said he had it specially built for an office on his farm. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lever. Thank you. I know we adjourned, but I didn't make note that we got the fire. Did you already say this?
I did not, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, you do it, you do it so well.
No, 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 it's fine.
The Fire and Emergency Services report from Assistant Chief Ernest Jones. We got our monthly report for March 2025. And, and I also didn't note that the event, the AI Summit, is being hosted. But I didn't see that because I just saw the letter by the Pine Bluff Black Chamber of Commerce. And I think that is it. Thank you all so much. Oh, one, one last thing, one last thing. We just came out of a really scary period of storms. And I don't know about you all, I was terrified that tornadoes would touch down, and they didn't. We experienced some flooding. We had no loss of life, very little property damage. And I am so grateful for our, just our, our police, fire, and, and everyone who is an essential worker, who served folks, saved folks, whose cars were stuck, and, and the like. I believe there was a rescue for someone who was in some body of water. But a lot wrong could have happened, and it didn't because we worked together. And I want to recognize Assistant Chief Jones, who was then acting chief and before today, Chief Warrior, Karen Blevins, who works for the county, but also works with us, and Director Holman of Parks and Rec. Who knew that Parks and Rec could be so negatively affected? And she and her team worked very hard to make sure that people who had trailers were moved and had another place to stay out of harm's way and also preserve our equipment and golf carts. And, and of course, Director Dockett, who was up and here nonstop. I mean, literally, out at 1:00, driving around, making sure everything was okay in the morning. So if I missed anybody, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to recognize everyone since we came out of this, unlike other areas of the state where there were, there was loss of life and property damage. So thank you all so much. And y'all's city council members work hard too, because they were calling, making sure folks were served as well where there was flooding. So we all, I think, did everything we could to make sure we kept our place safe. Thank you.